We have to wait just a second until the clerk gets back.
So if you're the one about the...
Keep it clean, Terry.
Always.
To go into public session.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson, Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Please stand for a moment. Please address the live and state of the legislation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your equality and justice. One nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all.
This is the plans with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, AL 1975. Out of the notice of this meeting had been provided in the following manner. Notice this meeting was forwarded to the Asbury Park press, the coaster and star ledger on July 30th, 2013, and posted on the bulletin board the same day. All notices are filed with the city clerk. At this point, we're going to open up the meeting to public participation. Please come to the mic, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Earlier you discussed those Dr. Allen's block party that's being played this Saturday. That block party is in memory of Derrick Williams, who was killed last September 21st on six to mama. The only request we have is to leave the feed for the block in the streets. The family of Derrick Williams is paying for that block party out of our pockets. We're not, we don't have any sponsors, we're not getting money from anywhere. We paid for it out of our pockets for the children, for rocking food, for rocking drinks, for rocking beans and prizes. And the only thing that we ask is to leave the $250. So now that you've decided not to, that $250 is taken away from our kids' money. So I'm hoping that you can reconsider your decision. Because again, this money is coming out of our pockets.
If I can address that just briefly, you're on the board of it, right?
Yes.
One of the suggestions I made earlier is that you hosted between the Obama building and the middle school. I mean, yes, the middle school, West Side City United had a function there and it was lovely. But an alternate location also would be the proposed park area on Springwood and Atkins and Union, I believe.
That's, see, that's the way it is. That's where the block party want to be. You and I were right there by the park. But the only issue was having this over by Obama building. It's like I say, we're providing food, we work the food, we're providing it, we're cooking it. And we have, we're cooking it in homes because if we don't, we have to get fire today. So if we were to do it over there, we wouldn't have anywhere to cook the food, provide to children. So again, I'm just asking to reconsider your vote. This is for our children. Everybody wants to yell and scream it out to the hours at Asbury Park. You said I can't talk about the voice that says how many people attend it? How many people are going to attend this? It starts with our kids.
That's right.
Okay? It starts with our children.
Can I make another suggestion? That you start asking people to contribute just a dollar? And if you get enough people, then you'll have the fee up.
I can. Anybody is willing to contribute.
Well, I will say this, I will contribute $10.
We thank you. We do. Any of you know us.
Me too.
I don't know what...
His daughter is sitting here, eight years old. And it'll be a year that her father is not here. We do not have a rest, but we do not want this day to go down in a bad memory. We're going to celebrate with these kids, even if there's not a rest. We're going to celebrate, and we're going to live, and we're going to keep going because this is our city. And these criminals...
Excuse me, excuse me. You can speak, but you're going to have to get in line, and you have three minutes. You just cannot get up and start speaking. But you are entitled to three minutes to say whatever you'd like. You have $10 for me. Don't leave. I'll be with you before tonight's over.
I'd like to contribute.
Thank you.
So what?
Take everybody to the floor.
I'll be there.
Thank you.
Yes.
Next.
Good evening. Mayor Campbell, Chief of Javon Landfred Park. Once again, I speak in the address to the playgrounds on Union Avenue. It's part of the Springfield Avenue Park area. I spoke once before about there not being any lighting over there. And that becoming a place where people can hang out late at night. But we have another concern, is that around the park, when it was constructed, gravel would rest there. Large rocks, the young people now, the kids are throwing rocks. My church, Second Baptist Church, has a parking lot back there. It's only a matter of time before somebody's field gets broken. Also, because my kid's throwing rocks, and he can't stop kids from throwing rocks. It can only happen two times. Somebody's going to get hurt. When the design was done, I can't see building something and not putting electricity there for lights. And I also can't see how somebody can build it and leave rocks out there, and that'd be a hassle. I'm requesting that be taken care of immediately, one on behalf of my church and one on behalf of the neighborhood. And that's it. Thank you.
And Dan, where is that location, by this one without park?
Yes, they built a park there, and they dusted up all the rocks there on the ground, so the kids don't...
Okay.
Would you like to address that, please?
Yes, I would. As far as the rocks, what's there is uniformly graded three-quarter inch clean carved stones, part of the drainage system. We did, you know, weigh the options, asked whether we pulled or not. It had something to do with where the curb sits and whether we bring in clean soil now or wait for the rest of the park. My bigger concern is the larger rocks that are on the actual rest of the site. We sifted that soil three separate times with special rig. And we moved quite a significant amount of debris out of there since it was polluted. But we will address the actual stone. As far as the lighting, the cabinet is in, the pole is in, we're just waiting on JCPL.
Okay, we can write down the rocks.
Yeah, no, we can do something about that.
Let me say something, because his pastor got in touch with me more than once. Could you explain what the city did in reference to that?
Yeah, absolutely. What we did is we excavated the soil, we added various piles. Instead of re-spraying it out on the field there, we actually sifted it to the best of our ability with the equipment that we have, which really not meant for that use. We pulled probably two whole containers that just rumpled, separated it from the soil, and took away anything that was not separable and dumped it all. It was probably a week and a half process just doing that for that small area. It's going to need to happen on the entire project there. But as far as the stone that was left, again, we weighed the option of whether we left that or if we did, especially for the soil. We bring in soil, it's going to get light. We're not going to get grass growing. Probably, well, it's not the definite that we'll get the grass growing. Drainage is not ideal, so we waited for the rest of the park. So water may lag, so it's an option of whether we have familiar areas or stone areas. Again, I do know the stone you're speaking of.
It's large stone, in all due respect to what you've done. Appreciate it, but rock is rock, and the kids want to talk. And when somebody's kid gets hurt or somebody's windshield gets busted out, they will not want to hear your explanation. And that's the truth. Okay?
Can I suggest that the three of us sit down and we discuss this further?
Sure. Sean, sir.
Yes, I'm tired. You can take it. No question.
Hi, Linda Phillips, 1302 Bridge Street. I actually wasn't going to talk about anything except that you guys raised a question in my mind, listening to your discussion about fixing Fourth Avenue and repaving it and closing up the bridge on Sunset, which I know is going to happen in 2014. Well, okay. What is the process? Like, the street in front of my house, going from Sunset over to Locust, between Sunset and Fifth, is a complete disaster. People come off of Sunset and they actually literally go, instead of on the right side of the road, on the left side because the back street's so bad. You can't, you drive it like this, you can barely hold on to your steering wheel. So I'm just curious, what is the process of how the streets get paved and how you get your street on the list of the next street to get paved?
So the engineer has a, what do you call it, you know, there's a master list. And all the streets in the city are evaluated as to, and there's a variety of ways that you evaluate. It's not just the current condition, but there's also, the street is a certain condition, and if you don't pave it, if you don't repair it now, you know, and let's say it would cost you X if you repaired it now. If you wait three years, it'll cost you 10X because you catch it at the right time. So I'll let the city engineer talk about the evaluation process. But the roads are evaluated as to condition, traffic, you know, are they main arteries? Are they side streets, et cetera? So there are a variety of factors that go into how you evaluate streets in the city and what, where they are in the process. There are certain streets that will be done by the developer, you know, when development happens there. So there are all these factors that are weighed in as to which streets get paved when. Do you want to answer that?
City manager hit it right on the head, especially when it comes to roadway volume. A lot of these, a large portion obviously is financing. But what we have is this thing called a pavement matrix study. So we analyze, again, all those factors. And again, a large part of our funding comes from the videotape of this annual grant program. And we also have to try to pick a project that would be graded the best, that would get us the most funding. It's a fine line, but we always take in suggestions from anyone.
Well, my street is a very busy street. People come back and forth on that street, coming in town and out of town, getting over to Sunset, and trucks come in that road. So in terms of busyness, Bridge Street between Sunset and Fifth? And so I would just like to somehow get in on somebody's radar.
There is a portion of that being reconstructed as part of the first project.
Yeah, the corner over there by the bridge.
It's a little bit more, and I've been told by the Charlie Weber Associates, who's a consultant on that project, that they may actually extend a little of Bridge Street there. I am familiar with Bridge Street. It's...
Okay, all right. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Anita Weiner. I live on Madison Avenue. And I have two subjects I'd like to bring up. One is called the Little Freed Library. And what it is, is a community effort to place libraries that look like kind of birdhouses that are built by the community and are managed by the community in areas that would be beneficial to students, kids, and adults. And what it is, is just you put a book, you take a book. You put a book, you take a book. And it gives access to kids whom they never have a book in their house. So I'm asking for some person on the council to work with me to organize a committee.
I wonder who you're asking, Anita.
I'm looking to show you ahead, because I know you have some awareness of this project. And I'd be willing to work and organize a committee, but I think it needs to work because of zoning and making sure we get it on the proper property. If it's someone's private property, we need their consent. If it's public property, we need your consent. So I'm asking for help, and I hope information on this.
Sure, and I've seen them, right, in Bradley Beach? If anyone's, I run in the mornings. And Bradley Beach has them kind of strategically out, and they're adorable, and they're fantastic, and I see kids...
And they're movable, too.
Yes, so you have a commitment from me certainly to sit down and start looking into it as possible.
Right, okay. Number two. I wanted to know if any new programs were being considered by you to assist the unemployed kids, the underemployed kids, the undereducated kids in this town to help combat, you know, going for drugs and guns? Have you looked into any other programs that are used in other communities? That is community-based in terms of social services, mentoring, drug rehabbing? A total approach, so that it's just not a piecemeal thing where you say, well, we're just going to have an after-school activity? I think it's going to take a lot more than just sending the kids to an after-school committee, meeting. So I'm hoping that you will find the time and the effort to locate other programs that have worked in similar kinds of populations.
What I would like to do is invite you to the next community development initiative meeting. I hope I have the date correct. I believe it's October the 10th. It was scheduled for the 27th of this month. And so many of the things that you're speaking about right now, you know, you will be able to find out some of the resources that we do have in our community.
And I'd like to go to the community development.
Great, anybody else come too? Okay, thank you. We have to go resolution paper, something on there, if possible. On the total, we're going 385, 581, 28, what page? On the last page. And it says 994, but on the front of the sheet, it says 354. And it refers to bound four fourth on page 15. And 15 doesn't tell me much, and I don't know what NJSHPQ means.
So when I go to page 15, in total list amount, it goes 994, 977.
Yeah.
And then when I go to the page you're talking about, it says 994...
In the front, first page? There's SA 854? Right here. And I don't know where the rest data came from. And I don't understand what NJSHPQ means.
Health fund. New Jersey State Health Fund.
Oh, I see. Okay. All right. And that's where you get the 900, no, that brings it up to 10 million. So there's 100,001 New Jersey health benefits, and there's 290 in another, which brings our total that you're going to approve to 91,385,000. Whoa, okay. All right. Now, my question is, I need some clarification on this. On page nine, we're talking about parking meters? And I, Ms. Henderson, you were here, and Mr. Reed was here, and I only expect other council members to know. But this rental, Mr. Reed, $22,283 on page 10. That's for the parking meters? That's a month, I guess, right, the top of the page?
It says for October, yeah.
Yeah. How long is that contract? Do we know, do you know off the top of your head? How long are we committed? Is that year to year?
I don't know how long the contract is. I don't look into that.
So we're talking $267,396 a year on that that we're paying for parking meters? And on the previous page, there was an integrated technical system, which I don't understand at the bottom of the page. Does that have anything to do with the parking meters?
Yes, it does.
What is that exactly?
That's the hosting. That's the outside hosting.
What is that?
Centralized server. It's the brain of the entire system.
Okay, and we pay that by the month, too?
Yes, per meter. It's a rental number. It's probably $40 a month or something.
So it's $3,920 a month we have to pay for that?
The two items were bid at the same time, and I believe it's a five-year lease purchase.
Because, wait a minute. Verizon Wireless is part of that also, right?
That's totally separate.
Okay, so is that why that's by the month? Oh, no, that's different. That's from July to... No, that's the month also. So on a monthly basis, we're paying $7,289 for that, use of that you're talking about, all that mess. Plus, we're leasing $22,383 for those parking meters out there.
Yeah.
Next question is, how much revenue do we get out of this?
Close to $2 million a year.
Okay, close to $2 million a year. Because how much do we, that's free, that's clear, that's...
No, 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 no. You said how much revenue. If you have to connect. You know, I would have to do, I would have to do exactly what you're doing, is go through the monthly costs, et cetera. You also want to add in personnel, everything else, okay? What I can tell you is that the overall parking utility is generating revenue for the city. There's a net gain, huge net gain to the city for the parking utility.
Well, if I might not be so bold to ask, is there any way I could see that, like, at the end of the month or in a few months? I'd like to see.
Sure, yeah. I mean, this is, look, this is a...
I mean, you're saying huge, but don't we owe money on those cockamamie meters that we got? And they're all rolling around?
I know. I've heard that question before.
I'm asking. No, I don't know.
No, well, let me, we say, okay, that when you take a look at a business, right? If, whatever you're paying out, if you're getting, if you're grossing X, you know, and take out Y, and you have a profit, and at the end of the day, that's where we are with that. So the city is, I think, I think actually it would be a good exercise for this city to put out a net gain so that people would understand the benefit of the whole parking utility. But when you add in whatever costs the city for the cockamamie meters that you referenced before, and the cost of maintaining the meters now, and the new purchase, and the personnel, the city is way ahead of the game. And, and it's not just a revenue generator. The other piece of it is, it's a parking management program. And all you have to do is ask any businesses in town, especially in the downtown, what it was like when the meters were down after Sandy, and it wasn't enforced, and people were parking, parking up all the spaces constantly, and there was no turnover, et cetera. So aside from the revenue part, the parking meters were instituted so that we could manage parking in the city more efficiently, more effectively.
Well, that makes sense. However, my other question is, with, that's what I would like to know. You're saying that we're making a huge profit, and for some reason? I mean, what do we do with the old meters? Do we still owe a bill on that? Or is that... I mean, this is only something that, I know we had meters, and then I know that they were gone.
Louise, I understand the question. It's something that Rita has asked. What I'm saying to you is that there was an investment made in the first iteration of meters, right? And, you know, they did what they did, and, you know, we generated revenue from that, but they weren't the final product that we thought was best for the city, so they were replaced. And what I'm telling you is that whatever the payout is for the city, on the old meters, the new meters, the maintenance, personnel, et cetera, the city is ahead of the game in terms of revenue. So when you start, let me put it to you this way. You start from zero, and John would be able to tell you. Maybe it was $10,000 a year, I don't know what it was they were getting from the dead meters, right? So people were still putting money into some of those meters. We collected that money. Whatever that number was, all right, let's be generous and say it was $10,000. Now the city is bringing in $2 million, right? So whatever, whatever costs were invested along the way to get us to the point where we have a highly effective system that does the job, all those costs in, the city is profitable. All right, so...
Next, please. Three minutes are up next. Read more on our way to the avenue. On page three of the bill resolution, there's 16 ex-employees with health benefits ranging from $1,600 to $200 and something. Could you explain that? Some of these employees have been gone 10 years.
I have to look at the individuals and, you know, I don't know off the top of my head what each of them is getting.
Well, what is that for? Health benefits?
Well, when people retire, they're still eligible for health benefits. I don't know if that's what this line item, it says, it says employee group insurance fees. So what that, what that could be, I mean, when you put in 25 years into the city and you retire, you're eligible for health benefits for life. That's part of what employees who have worked for the city receive. So that's an ongoing obligation that the city has for people who invest that much of their lives in working for the city. That's part of the contract.
$1,600 a month for what?
Rita.
No, I'm just asking.
No, no, you know what I'd suggest, I mean, very sincerely. Some of the questions that you come to the microphone with, I mean, required a little bit of research. So I would suggest that before the meeting, you ask that question. Let me get the answer. And then if you want to come to the microphone and say, hey, I want to answer this, you'll get a straight answer, and you'll get it the night of the meeting. I don't know the details of, you know, the nuances of what you're asking. Do people who retire get health benefits? Yes. If they put in 25 years, yes.
Yeah, but there's only 16 of them. You know how many people have retired from this city? Hundreds. These are only 16.
Okay, and I said that if you want me to, if you want me to find out what this specific bill is for, I'd be happy to. I don't know the answer to it.
Well, I was here Monday looking for you. I mean, you could have rented out the whole second floor on Monday. Nobody was seeing you.
You know, I have a cell phone, and it's, you know, it's great to be a stand-up comic. I have a cell phone, and you know how to get it home to me. No, you have not, but that's...
I've called you many times on your cell phone.
You want to reach me, I'm easy to reach. So I said, if you want to reach me...
I've called you many times on your cell phone. You don't answer.
No, you haven't.
And yes, I have.
No, it's not the truth. It's not the truth.
It isn't true.
No, it's not. So next.
I want an answer to this, because this is like $17,000.
I told you, I'd be happy to get you an answer. I'm happy to give it to you tonight.
Can I respectfully ask you to give the city manager an opportunity to get the answer and give back to you? Can you do that?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you.
Only two more meetings, Rita, so...
I don't care if you go now, tell you the truth.
Oh, you hurt my feelings.
You know what? I'm going to say this. That was an uncalled-for remark. But that's okay. It's an uncalled-for remark, and we don't need that here. He's the one that started it. Rita, thank you. Next, please.
I was talking to Sunset Avenue. I was questioning who's really here. Anyway, I'm up here about the roads. I want to mention two roads, one to go to the Main Street, one to go to the South Street. The Main Street from the road tracks up to pass the High School. That stretch of road is a wreck. It's not on the scheduled to be fixed.
Did you hear the question?
The Main Street going up past the High School.
The entirely, the entire length of the Main Street would be reconstructed under the state's project. The one that's, the road ties.
The other road I'm concerned about is wet from Sunset over to the lake. It fills with holes.
Yes, Sunset to, the immediate block east of the lake is scheduled to go on the road program next year. We received money maybe a couple weeks ago, we didn't know for that. But it's immediate, that one block between Sunset and...
Thank you.
Good evening. Commissioner Myers, Rio 40th Avenue. I want to remind everybody, we have a new forum with the commission, the Florida State Legislature, next Monday. They're going to be at 7 o'clock at the community center. Please come and ask all the questions so you understand what you're going to vote for.
Thank you. Who was that talking to? Say that again, please. In the mic, in the mic again, we couldn't hear you. We could not hear you again.
Repeat, can you go back to the mic and tilt your, your mouth?
Get right up to it.
Get closer to the mic.
And tilt, tilt it down.
Can you hear me now?
Then you have to talk again to the mic, not to the audience.
Well, that's right, yeah. Anyway, I was trying to tell everybody that I want you to come next Monday at the community center, where we're going to have a forum. We're going to talk to you again about the charter commission. We want you to come and vote on the fourth of November. We worked very hard for eight months, and we want some results. Thank you.
So the community center is Springwood Center?
Yes.
What time?
Saturday, Monday.
Okay.
Saturday, Monday.
Does they work, hello?
Yes, they do.
All right, Waterbound Avenue, Fifth Avenue. I was very intrigued by the comments made earlier about mandating lighting, automatic motion sensor lighting on multiple dwellings. I just want you to know that multiple dwellings are governed by the State Department of Community Affairs. So as far as studying compelling certain kind of lighting on multiple dwellings, you may be usurped by the state on that. On another issue with the lighting, I really think that's going to be a bad idea. Given a directive to put lights on, the general person, whether they have a multiple dwelling or a single-family residential, they'll go out, they'll buy the cheapest light, the floodlights, the two floodlights with the motion sensor, and point it out to the road. That's just humiliation. I think you need to think more about guiding people to do proper lighting. And with that in mind, I'm going to let you know that Eaton Town has an outdoor lighting ordinance. Ocean Township recently enacted an outdoor lighting ordinance. It's all-encompassing. It details what kinds of lights, how bright they can be, where they can be pointed. I would suggest it's time in Asbury Park to study lighting on a more global scale than just compelling motion sensors on certain buildings. There's an awful lot of horrendous, really poor lighting in town, a lot of it put up by the city itself. And I'd like to see if Asbury Park entered the 21st century. So I'm going to suggest that you start a lighting study committee, a lighting study commission, or just a small lighting study group. I'd be more than happy to volunteer my prime and expertise on that. It's really important to get good quality lighting, not just more brighter and brighter glare all over the place. On the second matter, I was very intrigued by the comments about the stones being put on. You know, I've noticed an increase in the use of stones as landscaping materials, in particular beachfront and residential properties, and also in downtown now. I've seen stones used as landscaping. This generally is a very bad idea. The stones don't stay where you put them, they end up on the sidewalks. They present a tripping hazard, they present, present a attractive nuisance for children to throw, as the other gentleman mentioned. And I'd also see you start looking at what are appropriate landscaping techniques in order to enhance the city, but yet keep in mind public safety. Stones should not be used anywhere near public spaces or adjacent to public spaces. It's just not a good idea. You can't keep them where they are, and they create a hazard. People wrenching their ankle, or tripping over, or just feet scattering on the road, right? I hope you, you don't take me up on that. Now, as far as tonight, I have an offer for tonight, all right? Which one of you will take a ride with me tonight to look at lights?
I'll take a ride with you, I guess, you know, I'll take a ride.
Awesome, all right. And you, you can understand what I'm talking about, and you can report that to your fellow council members. Excellent.
Are you going to start on the street right there?
Make sure you...
My name is Judy Krensky, I live on Third Avenue. I just had a question, I don't know if you can answer it or not, because I understand you can't answer questions with what you discussed in previous sessions, in your own session. Can anyone tell me what's going on with Convention Center and Madison, as far as the fire, uh, safety, breaker system, et cetera?
Jerry, do you want to say anything about that?
Well, I can say that the, the city has been working very closely with Madison Marquette to, um, uh, system in getting a fire suppression system that is much less expensive than the original, big prices that they, that they, uh, that was proposed to them. I think we've been very successful in getting them there. So we're really in the final stages of, of that process. And I don't have anything further to report out, not tonight, except that, that we are paying very close attention to that. And there is an agreement between Madison Marquette and the city to bring that all, all to fruition by the end of this month. And so, uh, I'll, uh, I'll know better in the next week.
So at least you have a target thing in mind.
Yes.
I mean, it's been, expanding, 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 over the years now.
Oh, no, you're right, several years.
Yeah, more than several. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Susan Glass, I live on Third Avenue. Two things I want to say. First of all, I'm fifty-six years old, I've been to a lot of council meetings, and I'm... Because of some comments that were made from the audience, I'm going to say something to you, Mayor. I've had a lot of experience, and I think my first impression of you is you're very professional. You do a wonderful job. I just want to commend you.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, when you were talking before about the Affordable Care Act, I missed the date. I'm so interested in going to that. Would you repeat that, please?
Yes, it will be Friday morning, Saturday, Friday morning, September twenty-seventh, ten a.m., here in council chambers. And please spread the word to, because if I can take just a minute, Asbury Park has been selected one of fifty states, fifty, I'm sorry, fifty cities and states in New Jersey to roll out the Affordable Care Act. Lot of questions. You, you watched any of the news? But anyhow, the regional director will be down here, so any questions that you have, please come and, and spread the word to other people.
I was not expecting to do this, but because you spoke about the Affordable Care Act, I belong to an organization, Community Center Project, and we are having October first, um, someone who works in the Medicare system come and explain all the changes that are coming because of the Affordable Care Act. And we'll just open that up to whoever would like to come to that. It is at, please tell me what time.
Uh, seven, seven o'clock.
Seven p.m. over at the Art Center, the one in Ocean Grove.
What's the date?
October the first.
October the first.
The Tuesday.
Thank you.
Good evening, Joe, eleven o'clock, we're going to have to start having you. This is not a major issue, but I just want to put it on the council's radar. I was actually just going to send everybody an email, but this actually...
Can't hear you.
No, I can't hear you.
So I just wanted to say that the replenishment of the beaches is coming, and ideally, Asbury Park, I'll just, ideally, Asbury Park could just reject the sand, and the issues around that, and everyone is getting sand, so sand is going to migrate in our direction. Um, we actually have really nice sandbars that protect our beaches and protect our swimmers now, and provide nice fishing habitat. So when you bring that sand in and you dump it, the Army Corps of Engineers generally makes just the right angle, and the way it's hit and they crash, it's very dangerous for swimmers, it ruins the, the, um, the sandbars we provide for fishing as well. So I think we, and also Bradley Beach and LBI, you remember a couple years ago, Bradley Beach ten years ago got like dirty sands, and LBI actually got bombs on their beach. So you never know what you're getting when you get that sand. But if we are going to go ahead with replenishment here, I guess, this, the Army Corps allowed requests from the city or the municipality, and I would say one request that has worked down in LBI to prevent that actual shore break that's dangerous is requesting that the slope of the sand be not put at a ten-to-one angle, but a twenty-to-one angle. And they can't create sandbars, but by reducing the incline of the angle, sandbars have been created down in LBI, which has protected the swimmers and protected the fishing habitat. So that's one thing I think we could ask for. Another thing that would be nice to ask for would be potentially dunes. I'm not sure right now, we have institutional capacity to discuss dunes with all different players, but moving forward, maybe that's something we could discuss. But at the very least, before that, Dr. Nistongoff, the twenty-to-one slope instead of the ten-to-one slope, makes a huge difference. Thanks.
Joe, would you send us that email, anyone, to follow up? I appreciate that. And do we, do we have a date for the beach replenishment?
No, they were awaiting the finalization of the Madison Marquette agreement, which I heard was just forwarded to the city, and it was a nuanced caveat there. Fred knew a little bit better about that. I know they will not go to bid until they receive both hours in Madison Marquette, so they're not up to bid as of right now.
And usually you can require them to do what you want, because some of the money comes from the city. This year, because it's all post-sandy, they're paying for everything, so they may be less likely to take advice from the cities. But like we said, LBI, it's work, the engineers know it work down there, so hopefully they'll just do it, but I don't think it would hurt to request it, but everyone doesn't have a...
Thanks.
Joe, I'd like to talk to you tomorrow or the next day about this.
Sure, yeah, I'll send you guys an email tomorrow morning.
Oh.
Cool.
Thanks.
Hello, Jerry, it's Brad Longridge. You know, I liked what you said in the paper last week about when things don't work, you have to change it, and you stick with the new changes. I thought that was pretty good, you had put in the paper. I'm paraphrasing what you said. But I'd like to disagree with you, respectfully disagree with you. The city manager is in charge of this bill, bill resolution, you all read it? He should know everything that's on it. He's the one that's running the city, so when he asks Rita to come ahead of time with a question, he should know what's on this paper. He's the boss, okay? With all the shootings that were going on in town, Gadsden Park Press been doing a lot of coverage on this, and today, Ronald Bonoff, he wrote down that we should copy ideas from Boston and Chicago, and he was suggesting that we, we have a man neighborhood station help. Somehow or another, I heard a rumor that the one on Springwood Avenue is kind of not being used, so I don't know if that's true enough. I thought that was an essential thing that he had in one article. Another thing in the Wall Street Journal, a few days ago, had what they did in Atlanta, Georgia, and they talked about, you have to fix up one house at a time, so you really have to get code enforcement to help you if you want to straighten out a thing. On Sunday, in the issue section, um, Michelle Grillo said that the broken window theory, all our lives have been hearing about the broken window theory. That's why I brought up about the lights on the porch, that's why I talked about the house number. How can people help if they have no way to have a reference point? The only thing I disagree with Grillo is, I think the city did a great job on the beachfront, and also doing a great job on the west side with Springwood Avenue and the infrastructure and the sidewalk, so somehow or another, I think she should visit the whole city. Where I liked was what Danny Harris wrote, that we need to harness the power of the churches in town. For years we've been saying, we always have to give the taxpayer, the churches have to play a big part in what's going on. And I think that's important, we have to have a marriage of that kind. Well, what I wanted to bring up, I read that, it said that forty percent of thirty-four, I think I read thirty-four out of the forty-one shootings happened in the southwestern zone of the city in one of the articles, and I can't find it right now. Well, if that's the case, it's like a roof. If you see the ceiling is wet, you go to the roof and try to figure out where the water's coming in. If we already know where the worst part of the city is, we have to focus on that harder, through code enforcement, through the churches, wherever. It's not just to you guys, you have to bring in other people to help you. Now, you all read the bill resolution, all of you? You all did? Ms. Henderson?
Question, question.
Did you read?
Did you question him?
Did you all read the, the bill resolution?
Do you have a question now?
Yeah, I've got a question. Um, can you explain what blanket PO stands for? Any of you?
You want to?
No, I'm asking you.
Yeah. May I?
Well, I'm asking council.
It's with a business, like, I've used like Asbury Harbor, you do a lot of business with them, and you went over there every time, you got something for ninety-nine cents and a PO, POQ. So you opened up an account, say, a blanket PO, not to exceed two-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Okay.
The two blanket POs with the two-hundred-and-fifty, and every time you go in there, you subtract the ninety-nine, you subtract the three-ninety-nine, and once it's down to like twenty, my goal is to renew.
Okay, John, I just want to get to my point. On recreation, on page seven, we have a blanket PO for five-hundred dollars, a blanket PO for five-twenty-eight, a blanket PO for twelve-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars. Taxpayers should know where that amount of money's going. Twelve thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars for recreation. I have to ask the city manager and some of the council, often come to council, the city is broke, and I just don't understand. Does not, someone not understand the B, the R, the O, the K, the E? Does anybody understand? We got to find a way to cut the bills. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I, I think some of the money we spend, I think all the money we spend on recreation is money well spent, and money, and what it's not to exceed is because it's a summer program, and you don't know if there's going to be eighty kids or a hundred kids, so you got to get a blanket PO, or else, guess what, you get two POs. But the money we spend on recreation is a lot, and probably is not enough for this town, and I would never cut recreation. If people want to vote me out, well, we have all of us blanket POs.
Let me say something else.
I think the councilman is quite on the money for that.
About ten or fifteen years ago, I'm not sure which, every time that you processed a check, it cost five-hundred-and-fifty dollars. So you want to write check after check after check. This is an easy way of doing it. But I also say to you, if there's anybody in here that wants to cut out recreation, if you think we have a crime situation now, cut out recreation and have children that are idle, doing nothing, you want to keep them.
Yeah, you're missing a point, because you know where money's going. Blanket POs don't, don't work without...
Five-hundred-and-fifth dollars for ice cream.
All right, Paul Patton, I have two questions. The first question may be addressed to the city attorney, about the back pay for seasonal workers who run being paid time and a half, and then it shifted over in the paper between six-sixteen and six-thirty, beginning of the time and a half, and about the back pay for the previous time before that.
I'm not involved with that, with that matter. That's something I'd have to review with administration and perhaps Labor Council, but I have no direct involvement with that issue.
Well, that's why I brought it, because every time I brought it to the firm, your name came up.
Well, that, I don't know, but I could just, let me, let me just jump in, because this is not Mr. Fettow's area at all. So you raised a valid, a valid point, and there was actually, there was an audit finding, our city auditors here tonight,
Yes, sir.
who noted that people that were seasonal for an extended period of time technically weren't, weren't in the, uh, or probably, weren't being properly classified. If you're, I mean, if you're seasonal, I mean, seasonal means you work for the summer, you work in the fall, or whatever. And there were some employees who were on extended period of time but not being paid overtime when they should have been paid overtime. The question that you're raising is something that is actually under review right now, to see how far back that, that, that should go. So it's a fair question, and I don't, I, I, with all due respect, I don't know who raised Fred Fettow's name, but it is not, it is not his area of concern. But we are, we are looking into that.
That brings on my next question, when you say season, when you say seasonal sometime of, some effect, my understanding, seasonal is a six-month period of time. I myself worked from the season, the summer season, May first, two thousand and twelve, until recent this past weekend, September fifteenth. That's seventeen months on a consistent period in which I did not get my time and a half until this past June. At the end of that, also, in that, in that timeframe, I've been, and Mr. Coonan, the director's here himself, will tell you, I've been very instrumental in whatever they need to be due from. need to be done from, we helped rebuilding that boardwalk, digging up that sand. You've been out there yourself, when in the rain and the snow, and cold chill practice, when I'm out here digging this dirt, when city relief putting big humps of trees on my back to, you know, to, to, you know, I've never worked the 80-hour work period. I've got payrolls from when I worked 160 hours, 190 hours, that $10 a rate. You know what I mean? Everything that the city, everything that DBW does, I've been instrumental in leading that. You know, from this transportation, cleaning up, to taking out church rides, you know, and on my own, I self-studied, got my CBL.
That's a sicko, by the way.
And turned around. The CBL driver for the city had a $10 pay rate. And now, and now, when the letter came out saying that they were releasing seasonal, and I got the letter, I looked at the letter like, are you serious? I worked for 17 months. How am I seasonal? When seasonal's six-month period, I worked a consistent 17 months under my pay rate. And in that time, I had children. In that time, I took out a lease for a apartment, financed a car, and now all of a sudden, I'm let go. After all, I worked personally with the mayor and the deputy mayor on many events. Gave both of my this summer and last summer. I worked with the chamber of commerce and everything. Myself, single. And now I have to go to unemployment half, or what I was bringing in to take care of my house, my four kids. That's completely unfair. And then I'm being told my back pay is under review. I think that's terrible.
I hear you saying.
Yeah, I.
No, 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 no. This is, have you spoken to me about this prior to today?
Yes, we have.
No, we haven't.
You did, right up in your house. When I was driving the second truck, you know, jumping up and back, and you're walking with your wife, and I said, Mr. Reedy, can you come over here?
Okay, so we have, what I'm saying is.
Told me that we were waiting for the budget. You said you were waiting for them to approve the budget, and once you approved the budget, you stayed at the bar. I will tell you personally, once I received the budget, and I knew who we could hire, and then I turned around and took that same conversation that I had with you, and turned around and referred it to John. This same conversation I had with you, I had with Mr. Marv Campbell in front of her house.
Okay, so my point is this. There's two pieces to this, right? One is whether you, whether you're categorized as a seasonal or not a seasonal. That's why the auditor picked that up, that we had people that were not getting paid what they should be getting paid, who started getting back pay. Now, how far back that goes, and that's the piece that I'm looking at, right?
Well, they said 2012, 2012 when I started. You know what I mean? I'm a CBL driver, driving a 31 cubic yard truck at $10 an hour.
Can I make a suggestion, please?
Yes, you can.
And I think all of us up here feel for you. I'm going to suggest that you set up an appointment with Mr. Reedy, so you can sit down and discuss this. And I want to say to those people out there in the audience, you here with this young man is saying, he has worked his rear end off. If you happen to know anyone that needs help, he's a good worker. And so, please, please set an appointment, Mr. Reedy. Okay? Thank you. Next.
I'd like to apologize for earlier on camera, thanks. The third day ever again. This was not supposed to be a crying event for us today. We were just here because an event that is going on the 21st that will mark one year for my brother-in-law who did die on a dark street. I wish I could carry one of those lamps and take it to Six Annual over there by the park, but unfortunately, I can't. But it would be nice to take one over there. But it is an event. Everyone who attended the Oyster Fest, come out.
Please do me one favor, address the council.
Come, whoever attended the Oyster Fest, come out. See the children. This is the 21st. These are for the children. Our kids. It has nothing to do, it's to stop the violence. Let everybody know in this town, they're not running this city here, these criminals, these gang members, this stuff. Enough is enough. We need to start with these little kids, let them know what's right, what's proper. And if it takes all our money and whatever to do what we have to do, it would be nice to do and enjoy it, and know that it's us. We better, we, they're defeated. Even though we might have not caught these people, they're defeated. And the problem is, we need to get together and shout it out, and stop saying, oh, you're the same, and still these children are not the same. So let's start with them. And like I said, we always have to, you know, raise your hand. And we honestly did get a lot of volunteer things, that people submitted food, water, and stuff. So it is a good program, but it's time to let our city know. When somebody says something is for the children, everybody, and as very partly, to make an effort and step forward and do what you need to do. We're voting, we're calling these names out, you're promising us the world, we'll promise these kids that you're going to be there for them from this day forward. That's what September 21st, 2013 stands for. So hope you'll be there, 2 to 8.
Hi, this is Gail Helprick, and I live on 7th Avenue here in Ashland Park. I came here today with a pre-planned speech that I was going to give. And I'm not going to give that because of what has actually occurred here today. But I will tell you, the bottom line on my speech that I came here to ask the council to do was to focus on prevention and education in this city, and to help the children in this city, because we need to stop in the atmosphere. We really do. I truly believe there are 98% of the people in this community are wonderful individuals, and they're people that I want to live around and be with. I think we have, we have wonderful role models this year at the Asbury Park Waterfront, which the young adults that worked at Waterfront were just lovely individuals. I enjoyed talking to them, and they were wonderful. And I would ask, I'm glad to hear that Mayor Campbell said today that there's a community initiative that's going on. I would like to learn more about that myself. But as you do go through that, and you think about it, I truly believe it's a powerful message to present to these individuals today. I understand, I work in business, I have my own business. I understand consistency and things like that. But we really need to think outside of the box now. It is a very, it would have cost the city nothing to allow these people to waive that $250 bill. This is a terrible. I'm hopeful that people here are donating money. I will do the same thing, but it would have cost us absolutely nothing to send a message to these kids that we're here and there's no man.
Finish up.
Finish up.
Okay. He's taking, that's a summary statement.
That's all I'm saying. It's a terrible message. $250 is not going to make or bring this community, and it's going to help these kids. And you know what? Maybe one, two, three, four of those children that are there are going to grow up and remember it and want to get back to a community. That's what I ask.
Thank you. Before you leave, I think I could just give your phone number and feedback and talk to them.
Okay.
Thank you. Next.
Ms. Sasso, Taylor Lane Street, Asbury Park, New Jersey. I came up to talk about the code enforcement, which people have mentioned, I've mentioned it here in the past. I've done a little research and asked some other people in some other towns. There are companies that handle the code enforcement, and they bring enough revenue into the township to warrant their paycheck, so to speak. So you're talking about the meters with, you know, the gross and the net and everything else. Our code enforcement's not working here. I had to go to the top of the food chain to get something done about that parking lot in Madison Avenue. I discussed it here well over a month ago. About, I carried six code violation. There's weeds and grass up to my waist. There's standing water that is constantly there. The fence is falling down. There's debris, and there's construction. There's construction debris as well as the litter. I mean, I don't understand how we just kind of, and code enforcement's not doing what they need to do. That's right across the street from the building. I'm not saying it's their fault. I'm saying that, you know, what's happening is not working. And you can drive all over the city, and I think somebody could spend months just doing it. So to say to these guys, just add this on to their workload, I don't see how that's going to work. But it is revenue that will come in. It will also force these landlords who have multiple dwellings, who refuse to do anything to the quality of living for people who are, can't, don't have other options. You know what? If they're forced to do what they have to do and maintain these buildings, and they're not going to be so quick if they're fined and everything, to just let it go and let these people live in the conditions they're living in. So it's work in other towns. I don't see why they don't look into something like that. And as for, you know, the $250, I understand your position with not making, you know, it's hard to say one, and it's the next, and the next, and the next, but maybe for something like that, where it is for the kids in the community, there could be some kind of a provision set up for future so that, you know, certain things that benefit all of the community, you know what I mean? Instead of saying, we're waiving this particular one, perhaps this is going to be something that's going to be done every year, something that can be set up where they don't have to pay a specific fee. They could name it something else or put provision in. Maybe you guys could vote something like that. Thank you very much.
Before you leave tonight, just give me your name again and.
Not now.
And phone number. Okay? Thank you. Anyone else? Move to call you. Second.
Second. Second.
Councilor Moore.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Start with the approval of the municipal September 4th, 2013.
Move it.
Second.
Yes.
Councilor Moore.
Yes.
Councilwoman Quinn.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Payroll resolution for the period of September 1st is a $50 and the amount of $968,000.168 and 8 cents. We're moving second. Councilor Moore.
Second. Oh!
Third and second.
I wish I could.
Time. Is payroll, is this?
Payroll.
Payroll is that. I'm trying to press. Number Louise mentioned.
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes.
Councilwoman Quinn.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Markers compensation. one is $1,895.45.
Move it.
Second.
Second.
Councilor Moore.
Yes.
Councilwoman Quinn.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
We have application to renew the liquor license at 700 Quipman Avenue, the former Upstage Club. It is inactive. The state has proved it.
Move it. Second.
Councilor Moore.
Yes.
Councilwoman Quinn.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Second is the special events applications as outlined in the work session by Tom Gilmore.
Move it.
Second.
Second.
Councilor Moore.
Yes.
Councilwoman Quinn.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Resolutions. First is the item of revenue into the 2013 budget.
Move it.
Second.
Second.
Question. Is this the one for payroll?
Yeah, that, that.
Okay, I'm just curious. I mean, when I read it, I thought it was accounting. It says, uh, you know, three hundred.
Now, it should read City of Asbury Park. In other words, you know where Ricky works? He was doing, putting the resolution together, just used the form Asbury Park.
Okay.
That's what happened. So City of Asbury Park.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Moore.
Yes.
Councilwoman Quinn.
Yes. Yes. Can I just say, this community rocks so much that everybody's going over. I am so proud of all the people who are going over, Joe, and why.
Don't go home yet.
I mean, you're cleaning house here.
Yeah, we haven't been yet.
Wait till after meeting ends.
Come on, Mrs. Banks.
Wait till we, it's almost over.
Resolution authorizing the purchase of the electronic interference system for the police department.
Move it.
Second.
Councilor Moore.
Yes.
Councilwoman Quinn.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Just for the record, this is the end of the grant.
Resolution to extend the paddleboard concession on DLA through November 1st, 2013.
Move it. Second.
Councilor Moore.
As per the stipulations.
Yes, with the stipulations that were discussed during the work session.
Yes.
Councilwoman Quinn.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Asbury Park endorsing concept redevelopment, development for the New Jersey Route 71 pavement rehab project in the city of Asbury Park. That's endorsing the main street diet.
Move it.
Second.
Councilor Moore.
Yes.
Councilwoman Quinn.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
This would be a resolution authorizing applications for municipal aid grant funding. One is for a road improvement project at Fourth Avenue. The other one is a pedestrian safety project on the intersection of Sunset Avenue and Comstock Street.
Move it.
Second.
Councilor Moore.
Yes.
Councilwoman Quinn.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor and Council, it's now time for the public hearing that we discussed earlier during the work session with regard to the adjustment to the city's sewer rates, and in particular, the connection fees. Mr. Kaplan, could you join us? What I would need to start the process is a motion and a second and a vote to open the public hearing. Before we invite members of the public to come forward, though, I will make some comments and put some statements on the record for Mr. Kaplan. But to formally start the process, we need a motion and a second and a vote to open the public hearing.
I move the open. Second.
I have a question. Can we take a two-minute break? Just because Mrs. Banks wants to leave, we want to give her money, and she does want to stay. So can we take a two-minute break?
Whoever moved second of you withdraw your motions for the exact time being. We'll take a two-minute break.
And I withdraw.
Public hearing.
Public hearing. Second.
Councilor Moore.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Okay, Mayor and Council, members of the public, this is a public hearing that is being conducted pursuant to NJSA 40A, colon, 26A-11, and City Code Section 18-5.6 concerning proposed amendments to the sewer rate schedule specifically regarding sewer connection fees of the city of Asbury Park. I wish to note that adequate notice pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act and other applicable statutes has been given, and this hearing has been properly advertised in the coasters required by law. This hearing will be conducted in the following manner. The city will present its witness to testify concerning the sewer connection fee charges. After the witness testifies, any member of the public in attendance will have an opportunity to ask questions of the witness. After that, anyone wishing to make a statement concerning the proposed sewer connection fee charges may make a statement. After everyone has had a chance to make his or her statement, the public hearing will be formally closed, and the city council will consider the proposed adjustments to the city's sewer connection fees. The city would like to call its auditor, David A. Kaplan, as its witness in this matter. Mr. Kaplan is seated here. Mr. Kaplan, would you kindly raise your right hand if you swear in? You swear or affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Mr. Kaplan, please state your position with the city of Asbury Park.
I'm the city's independent auditor.
And how long have you held this position?
From the AKCPA, I've been the city's auditor for six years.
And would you please state your educational background and professional qualifications?
I'm a certified public accountant, registered municipal accountant, public school accountant in the state of New Jersey, and I'm the owner of the AKCPA, Certified Public Accountant for Local People, Oakdale, All Branch, New Jersey. I've been auditing government entities in New Jersey and competing cert cash and fees for over 30 years.
Based upon that background, Mayor and Council, I believe Mr. Kaplan is an expert, and I would like to ask. and I would like to ask him a couple of questions. Mr. Kaplan, are you familiar with the finances of the city sewer utility?
Yes, I am.
And are you familiar with the requirements for establishing sewer connection fees for a municipal-owned sewer authority?
Yes, I am. Under the law, the charges of municipal-owned sewer utility must allow the utility to recover all the cost of operation, maintenance, administration, construction, debt service, and all other lawful expenses of the sewer utility, and to establish and reserve contingencies. A portion of those charges come from connection fees.
Did you perform a study for the City of Asbury Park to determine whether the current sewer connection fees would be sufficient in 2013 to meet the budgeted expenses of the sewer utility?
Yes, I did.
Can you please describe your study and what conclusions you're drawing from it?
Sure. So my study focused solely on sewer connection fees. The objective of the study was to compute the sewer connection fee in performance with the statute requirement to do so and in performance with the statutory computation methodology. The computation has two integral parts. First is to determine the capital base, which is the sum of all debt service, both principal and interest the city has paid for sewer utility improvements since the inception of the city. Additionally, any capital costs incurred by the city for sewer system improvements not provided by bonding are also included in that capital base calculation. However, any grants or subsidies the city receives to defray the cost of any of the debt service is excluded. A good example of that is the 2007 NJDF debt service, which the city pays the debt service but is reimbursed by the developer. That is excluded from this calculation. The second integral part of the computation is determined of, is the determination of the number of service units. Service unit computation is a flow-based computation, and here, it's based on water meter readings provided to us by New Jersey American Water Company. Doing the math, dividing the number of service units into the capital base yields the residential connection fee per service unit, and in this case, capital base 28,744,697 divided by the service unit 6938 equals residential connection fee of 4,143. There's another component for non-residential connectors, their charging connection fee based on their projected consumption as set forth in DDP flow criteria. Their fee is on a per-gallon basis, and that per-gallon charge is established by dividing the aforementioned $4,143 by the average daily usage of a single-family home, which is 189 gallons per day. So 4,143 divided by the 189 yields the non-residential fee of $21.88 per gallon per day.
And Mr. Kaplan, in your opinion, are the proposed sewer connection fee increases necessary?
Yes.
And in your opinion, are the proposed increases reasonable in amount?
They are, yes.
And do you recommend to the council that they pass a resolution amending the city's rate resolution to reflect the new connection fees in accordance with your report in your testimony this evening?
I do.
I have no further questions of Mr. Kaplan. Are there any members of the public who would like to ask Mr. Kaplan questions? If so, please come forward and state your name and address prior to asking the question so there is an accurate record. Please come forward.
Go ahead. I may just not be understanding this right, but you're saying this non-residential, is 2188 come down for a day?
Yes. It means when, say, a new restaurant wants to open up in town, create a new building, and, open up. So the DDP, NJDPP has something called flow criteria, and they say, okay, if the restaurant's going to have 10 seeds, they would project that the restaurant's going to fall, and I'm just throwing numbers out there, 1,000 gallons a day. If there's 50 seeds, it's 5,000 gallons a day, and don't quote me on the numbers, just the concept. So we would take that 1,000 gallons a day and say, okay, 2188 per 1,000 gallons...
1,000, but you have per gallon 2188.
2188, no, per gallon, per gallon, per day.
Per gallon, so if they use 1,000 gallons, if they use 2188, a thousand, reach 1,000 gallons?
2188 times 1,000 in your example.
It's a connection fee. It's not a daily charge. It's a one-time charge.
Right, this has nothing to do with the current users of the system.
Connection.
The whole concept, the whole concept of the connection fee is to level the playing field, okay? So that if you were a homeowner, and you lived in your house for 20 years, and you paid your sewer fee all along, a portion of your sewer fee went to build the system. Somebody moves in next to you, brand new, they didn't pay for anything yet, so the concept is to bring them in the same playing field with you so that everyone has paid their pay.
So do the people that paid all along, do they get a benefit?
Yes, absolutely.
How?
Because the connection fee revenue goes into the sewer utility fund and helps offset the total cost of the sewer utility operations, so you do get benefit.
But rates never go down.
That's probably true, but impossible. It is possible.
But it impacts how much they go up, I think that's the...
Right, it absolutely could defray the increase.
Okay. So I thought I read, how much is it going to cost the average homeowner?
It will cost the homeowner, if the resolution passes this evening, $4,143 to connect to the system. This isn't for a currently connected user, this is just for a new homeowner.
And what about the homeowner that's been there?
If the house sells, if there was a person there, the house sells, and someone else comes in, they don't have to pay a connection fee because the connection fee was originally paid by the original owner.
How much is the debt service?
The total debt service that I mentioned earlier for this computation, so this is the total that the city has paid out of pocket since the inception of the city for sewer-related items is 28,744,697.
Well, what is that debt service today?
It's not part of this hearing.
Oh, so you were talking about debt service?
This is cumulative debt service from 1958 through 123112.
So how do you find out that the debt service, that you don't hear it here?
That's part of the budget, actually the budget hearing, not the connection fee hearing.
Did you say it at the budget hearing?
I was the president of the budget hearing, I'm sure.
Oh, okay. I have to call CFO, right?
Yes.
Are there any other members of the public who would like to come forward to ask a question of Mr. Kaplan or to generally make a statement? Okay, well, Mayor and Council, I would recommend that the public portion of the rate hearing be closed.
Move it. Second.
Councilman Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Do any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Kaplan? If not, I have passed out a resolution this evening establishing a new sewer rate schedule regarding connection fees for the City of Asbury Park, and it conforms with the report that was provided to you in your packets. If you would like to move that forward, we need a motion and a second and a vote to approve that resolution.
I make a motion.
Second.
Councilman Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
There's one more item of business, and that has to do with the bid.
The decision of the bid. And it's a resolution awarding a contract to provide liquid sodium hydrochloride to the base of the human body.
Move it.
Councilman Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Motion to close.
Move to close. Second.
Councilman Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
The meeting is closed.